Monday, September twenty-second. Jordan, would you start us off for the roll call, please?
Please respond by stating present. Councilmember Ronane.
Present.
Foeburg.
Present.
Lee Belt.
Present.
Ward.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
E. Conger.
Present.
Nielsen.
Present.
Norv Strop.
Present.
Mayor Shoneman.
President, please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
We live in the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we do have a few minor amendments to add to our agenda before we take a vote on that. These are just some late adds to the party. I've got item five G is a public hearing to consider an ordinance for fairgrounds annexation. I've got five H, which would be to set a hearing for a wine walk, one day alcohol license. And finally, five I would be reserving a time to set a public hearing for a one-day alcohol license for refuge retreats event. So I would take a motion to approve our agenda with those three additions, please.
Move to approve the agenda with the addition of the three new business items.
Second.
Got a motion from Johnson and a second from Lee Belt. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next, I've got the approval of last week's meeting minutes, which took place at our meeting on September fifteenth. I would take a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, E. Conger, second Ward. Anyone have anything? Or we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Handful of speakers signing up to speak all about the two-way Main Street vote, which will be taken in our new business part of the meeting here tonight. So we'll kick things off with Mr. Brent Fisher. Brent, there, you're closest to the podium. That one's easy. Make sure the little green light is on so people can watch you. Jordan, are we live streaming?
Yes, we are.
Great. Sounds good. I had told a few people we would, so that is good. Brent, the floor is yours. Welcome.
Okay, I'm Brent Fisher. I own property in five hundred block of South Main Street for the past forty years. And I know I spoke before, but I just have some new things tonight that I'd like to address, some kind of nuts and bolts of the plans. I've kind of looked at your agenda for tonight with your Plan A, or Option One, you're calling it, or Plan B, Option Two. And the ironic thing I see, if you have those before you and you look at those, in the five hundred block with both plans, you're eliminating ten parking spots. So to say, well, let's go with Plan A with just restriping, you're still taking ten spots out of there. Currently, there are seven spots in each of the quadrants, which is a total of twenty.
Brent, I wonder if you don't have slightly modified version.
Travis, Travis, I'll pull it up.
Oh, okay. That'd be great. On Friday, Brent, we took a field trip down there and I expressed my concern with that in agreement with you. And I had our engineering department redraft that intersection so that that would not be the case.
I have the notes for tonight's meeting, you know, the original agenda.
Yeah, so it was a late addition because the quickest I could get everybody down there to pencil in the new plans was on Friday. Or was it Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday, but we got the plans on there on Friday. So missed the original cutoff and it's been updated on those.
Okay, well, it's still a significant loss of parking on the five hundred block.
It's not, though. I wish you could see.
Okay.
The, I'm trying to hand you a print of it. Everything zoomed in. Would you hand that to me? Pass it across.
Okay. Carry on. Sorry about that. I just wanted to make sure that you were working with up-to-date information.
Well, this is only half of it. Regardless, I know for a fact you said that on the other five blocks, you're going to take three out per block. So that's fifteen, if you take three times five, that's fifteen. Even if you take the three out of here, we're still close to losing at least twenty prime Main Street parking places if this project goes forward. And actually, on both of these plans, in front of Domino's is where it was really sacrificed. Here again, this is different than what I'm seeing on there. But my point is, you're losing some prime parking spots. If it's fifteen or twenty, whatever it is, that we're always complaining about, we need more parking downtown. Another concern that I kind of light here, with the traffic configuration of the southbound lane in front of the five hundred block, most likely there will be traffic backed up from Sixth Avenue going north. Now you've got people parking in those parking places that are going to try to back out of those parking places, which is going to be impossible when you have cars sitting there in that parking, in that lane that are going to want to make a left or right-hand turn. So there are, again, a safety issue, a backing issue of trying to get out of those spots. I have a feeling that the turning lane will need to be added. Whether you go with Plan A or Plan B, just for the sheer fact that you're going to all of a sudden see, okay, now we got this backup parking issue, we have to put the turning lane in because DOT is going to get involved. Everyone's going to have an issue with the backup parking. People won't be able to back out of the parking places. So it's just kind of a snowball effect. Well, we're going to try this, but we're going to end up having to do this anyway. I see a lot of safety concerns, traffic flow issues. I guess I talked to Travis on Friday about this a little bit, too. And to me, it's not about the money. You could have a grant that pays for this a hundred percent. You could have a private entity in town that's paying for this, no cost to the city. It's just a bad idea. There is nothing that looks good about this idea. You're going to have more traffic count, but that's not going to bring us more business. You're going to have safety issues. You're going to have issues with delivery trucks. It's just one thing after the other. My phone's ringing off the hook in my business every day. I've got people walking in. I want to sign petition. I want this thing stopped. It's just, it's just rolling more every day. Every time there's more publicity, I'm getting more people calling me and saying they want this stopped. There's just not the community support for this. I don't know where you're getting your support from. If you would poll people in this community, it's just not there. So we're prepared to get a referendum, put this to a public vote if the council approves this. We've been working with Ron and Jordan, and we've got all our Ts crossed, Is dotted. Dawn has done a great job of getting all the information so that we have all of our petition information ready to go. I guess I just encourage you again, vote now. It's going to save money. It's going to save a lot of people's time to run around and get petitions filled out, which we will do if we need to. I would just encourage you to vote for Option Three, which is to just end the project right here and now. Make it simple, save a lot of time, a lot of work, a lot of money. And it's just not supported by the community as far as anyone that I've talked to. So with that, I will, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Brent. Appreciate that. John Ikinger.
Is, I believe I'm saying that right?
Perhaps I'm not. Is that how you say your name, John?
That's right.
All right.
Yeah, I don't have much to say.
All right.
I just am opposed to the two-way Main Street. I just say, if it ain't broke, why fix it? And it appears that you are into a big tax and spend program. There's a lot of people having trouble with these manhole covers. Why don't they fix those? There's a lot of things need to be fixed. They don't fix them. That's all I got to say.
Thank you for that input. John Stewart Berks. Berks?
Yeah.
Welcome, Stewart. Appreciate you coming in today.
Where's Ms., where's that fellow, the council member that lives on Eisenhower, just in the eighteen hundred block? Is he here? That's you. I live right down the street from you. I would like to address this two-way or one-way Main Street issue. I've been following it in the paper. And I've always been in favor of letting big-ticket items, let the people vote. It's their money, taxpayers' money. Let the people decide what they want to do. I'd like to tell you a little story. We lived, we spent twenty-four years out in Southern California, the land of the cereal people, the fruits, flakes, and nuts. And there was a town called West Covina. It was about halfway between San Bernardino and Los Angeles, town about the size of Sioux Falls. And their city council, which consisted of seven council members and the mayor, all elected, they decided in a smoke-filled-back room to re-put a tax on cable TV. Now, this is, I don't know, twenty, twenty-five years ago. And a basic cable TV was about forty bucks. They slapped a fifty-dollar tax on it. And out of the seven council members, six voted for it. The mayor voted for it. And they, they got their tax. People got together, circulated recall petitions, and had a recall election. And six of the seven council members who voted for the tax got booted out. The mayor got booted out. Anybody who voted for it got booted out, except the one fellow who voted against it. But they got their tax. And there is one more thing I would like to say, and then I'm through. Daniel Patrick Moynihan, he was on a television program, I don't know, a few years ago. And they were having some discussion on politics. And everybody had a closing, there must have been three, four of them, five of them on that panel. Everybody had a five-minute segment at the end of the hour to make a comment. Well, four of them talked for five minutes each and didn't say a thing. Daniel Patrick Moynihan got up, and I'll never forget this. He said, "The only thing I've got to say is, I don't care whether it's a city election, county, state, or federal vote, because the vote of the people is powerful, very, very powerful." Thank you.
Thank you, Stewart. Appreciate you coming in and glad that you made your way back to Aberdeen after a time away. We've got a...
Yeah, we got the hell out of there.
Well, welcome back.
Not even a nice place to visit.
Well, they've got weather on their side, so that'll... Now, I'm going to need some help with the next name. I think it's my friend with the... Help me out here, my friend. You just make your way up there. Between your handwriting and my inability to pronounce names very well, I'm just going to let you introduce yourself.
My name is Jean Christophe Nienhoro, and I own the bakery on, in the ward. And I mean, personally, I, I think it would be a good idea to have it a two-way street. I think it would bring in a little bit more business on Main Street. And also, I feel like a lot more, like if people walk a lot on Main Street, so I don't think it's going to be that big of an issue as far as like parking or anything like that. And it'll just make people park more in the parking structure, which I feel like it's underutilized a lot. So, yeah, I'm all for it. And I hope that it passes. And, yeah, that's all I'd say.
Thank you. Appreciate you joining us tonight. Next, we've got Dawn Shepherd. Dawn has been here a time or two. We know how to say her name. Appreciate it.
Yeah, so we've all heard a lot of reasons in the last few weeks as to why people think this is a bad idea. And it is a bad idea. I think the majority of people that we've spoken with have come to that conclusion. We appreciate that you're working on that, trying to resolve some parking spaces on that first block. But the bottom line is you're still going to have a lot of congestion at that corner. I spoke with the South Dakota Department of Transportation last week about that lane, if it's a two-way street, and the fact that the Gen C agency building is on that east corner. And just like on Third Avenue where they have a no right turn on red because of the building on the left side, you can't see around there. It's a blind spot. He said, yes, that would very potentially be a problem there. And he said, without seeing the exact plans and where the crosswalk was going to be, he couldn't say for sure if they would require that. But he said they would come out and do a site testing on it, if necessary, if it came to that point. And Brent was right. You're still going to have congestion and people parking. If people are parking in front of his store or in front of Domino's on that west side of the street, and they've got a red light and car is stopping there, whether it's a red or a green, you're still going to have them stop there. One left turn is going to hold everybody up. If they end up having to put a no turn on red, everybody's going to be held up. The people that are parked in that area will sit there for a very long time trying to back out and get very impatient and plan just not go anymore, not come there. So due to that problem, we feel that, we heard some comments last week about, can we just try this as an experiment? And if we don't like it, we'll revert back. But what about if you don't like it and you decide it has to go to a three lane? That's going to be even worse because then you will still have a no turn on, no right turn on red, and you will still have no parking because all the parking will be wiped out in that area. And there are two businesses that are going to suffer very, very deeply from the problem of congestion at that corner. And those are two businesses that have been there for decades. And they've been there through good times and bad times and highs and lows, and they have persevered. And it's like, it's not going to be the economy that does it. I mean, it's going to be their own city council. And I think you really need to think about the destruction and how detrimental a situation just as simple as parking is going to be to a business. And I just think it's very, very wrong that that is not being taken into consideration, or it's just like it's not a big deal to a lot of people. And I think it's really sad when the public sees that. And I haven't seen one plan to mitigate that problem. Like I said, I do appreciate you trying to get more parking places there, but it doesn't resolve the congestion issue on that corner. Leaving it one way would resolve that issue. We don't have that problem on that corner or any intersection right now. The other thing is that some of you I've talked to have said, well, this is great because it's only two hundred thousand dollars if we do the two-lane, or a little bit less. Like, that's just pocket change for you guys. It's not pocket change for the public. Everybody still is saying, two hundred thousand? They want to spend two hundred thousand on something that we don't even need, doesn't need to be fixed. There are so many problems in the streets and potholes and corners. And you talk to anybody up the street, and they're thinking, they can give you a list of what else would be a priority over this for two hundred thousand dollars. So even though you people might think it's not a lot to the taxpayer and to the constituents and to the residents, it is. So I really think you need to take all of that into consideration. And I think if you really think about it, who is this going to benefit? You really don't know. It was called an experiment, so you obviously don't know for sure if it's going to benefit anyone. But it's guaranteed that it is going to be very detrimental and destroy two businesses on that block. And I think that's very, very wrong. So I think you all need to really think about that sincerely and sincerely. And you're going to have to look at yourself in the mirror in the morning when you make this vote today. And I hope you can live with yourself when you do. And if not, we will start the petition drive to put it to the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Good to hear from you. Next, we've got Bill Cantalou. Bill, welcome. New voice on the topic.
Well, this is my first time here, so I'm kind of excited. And I'm going to take your minutes, okay? Talk a little bit longer. But my name is Bill Cantalou. And I think congestion is a good thing. I just came from Sioux Falls. That's congested down there. I couldn't find a parking spot. There were people everywhere. They have a two-way Main Street. But I grew up with a two-way Main Street. The saying in Aberdeen is, what's happening downtown? These were the days. We could not wait for crazy days. The stores were galore. Nobody avoided Main Street. It was the heartbeat of Aberdeen. The banners across Main Street said, they let us know that there was a pheasant's game tonight. They let us know when the snow queen contest was. They let us know when the fair starts. The unique Christmas lights that the parents took their kids to look at on Main Street. Take a look at those historic pictures. There's a trolley car. There's horses. There's cars. There's tons of people on Main Street. When we changed that Main Street, what happened? Brent, I could find a parking spot at your store every time I've gone there for five times. I've never once ever not got a parking spot. Congestion's a good thing. I don't want to get any enemies here today because I just want you guys to know how I grew up and how much fun I had on that Main Street. It was a sight, I'll tell you that much. Recently, my wife and I were sent on a mission to explore other cities in South Dakota. Sioux Falls, two-way. Brookings, two-way. Millbank, two-way. Mitchell, two-way. Mowbridge, all two ways. Spearfish, Sturgis, Belfooch, Custer, Hot Springs, all two ways. Every, I got to travel the United States for twenty-five years. The first him, first thing I seen, come and visit our historic downtown two-way Main Streets. People headed south, going this way, like me, all the time, coming from my daughter's house. I avoid, when I get to the flame, I go that way or that way. I never go that, down Main Street, unless I have to go that way. But I'm going that way. So nobody knows what's happening on Main Street. They're avoiding it. That street down there is two-way. That Main Street's two-way. Why isn't that two-way? And back in the day, it was two-way. I could pass my friend a beer. You know, that was kind of a fun thing, but I didn't want to get too excited about that, okay? We have spent a lot of money on other projects that, that do not help retail businesses, right? Let's spend some money on helping retail downtown. Two-way is going to get people going down there. There's activity. I'm telling you, it was fun to be down there. We need to catch up with the cities one through nine, and I think you know what that is. One through nine. They've got us beat. Even Watertown, out of control, the things that they're doing. The only way to cure this problem is to rebuild Main Street and make it a two-way. You get that? Only one way to build is make it a two-way. So if you ask Alexa, what's wrong with Aberdeen, and I'm not talking this Alexa, she would say, we need a two-way Main Street. We need another overpass over there to get away from those trains. We need to clean up our sidewalks on Sixth Avenue, get all the weeds out of there. We need more restaurants and businesses downtown. We need to beautify our neighborhoods. We need affordable housing for families. And we need another attraction, a store, a plant, like a hotel, and maybe a pool. But one of the points I'm getting at, in nineteen seventy-four, there was twenty-eight thousand five hundred people in Aberdeen. In two thousand twenty-five, there's twenty-seven thousand four hundred. So we're going backwards. We're not gaining anything. We're not, we need to get people in here. Carl Perry, which you guys all know, him and I fought to get that northern football field on their campus. When I played football at Northern for one year, I looked up in the stands, and there was like five hundred people there. And I thought, what am I doing? There's five hundred people at this game. How many people were, did you think were at the game on Saturday? Seven thousand people, because we moved that stadium from over there to outside there. And the same thing will happen with Main Street, if we redo that Main Street. And what else do I get to say? A couple minutes? There's no light showing me what's going on. But, you know, I know, I know that congestion, you know, back in the day, we had to parallel park on Main Street, you know? And that was difficult. I mean, everybody took, went out to take their driver's test. You know, I got to pass this parallel parking thing so I can park on Main Street. That, that, that's what they said. So I can park on Main Street. So I would love to see it. I mean, I grew up on Second Street by the overhead, and I ran down Main Street to the Y every day to work out. And, and I've seen all the restaurants, all the hotels, all the stores, everything like that. That made free was a bustling downtown. So I hope this passes, and it would really do a good, a lot of good for Aberdeen. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate you coming in. One last speaker that we've got here tonight, Spencer Summers. Spencer, you had a few things to share. Okay, sounds good. Changed your mind. I think you'd... All right, then that will wrap up our open forum segment of this meeting. We'll move along to our consent calendar, where we've got a number of items here. We've got a proclamation. I'm not going to read it because of the length of it, but if you guys are out and about on Saturday, you're welcome to come to the Alexander, or the K O E library, and we'll be doing Daniel Tiger's neighborhood situation over there. So that ought to be a lot of fun. Then we've got reports from various boards. We've got a lottery notice. We've got water and sewer contractor license, some transfer of on-off sale malt beverage, and finally, a daycare license renewal. I take a motion to approve our consent. Oh, actually, and then we've got the ones that we had added as well.
A public hearing?
There we go. I don't have to rattle off those. I already read them.
Second.
Motion, Norv Strop. Second, Nielsen. Anyone have anything to add to our consent calendar or discuss?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Hi, Jordan, just need to abstain from item five I, please.
All right. Jordan made note of that. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Single item of old business here tonight. We've got a possible second reading and final adoption of an ordinance twenty-five oh nine oh one. That is our budget, our twenty-two sixty-six appropriations ordinance. We've talked about it at length last week, and it was voted unanimously for. Robin, Jordan, anything change or any additional information you'd like to throw in there before we take our second vote?
The budget, before he uses the same budget we've presented in the past, there's no changes, and staff recommends approval.
Move to approve.
Motion, Ward. Second, Norv Strop. Any final thoughts from the council before we take a vote? Jordan, would you give us a roll call?
Councilmember Ronane.
Aye.
Foeburg.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
E. Conger.
Aye.
Nielsen.
Aye.
Norv Strop.
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving along to new business, the first item is our possible first reading and passage of a resolution, which is title twenty-five oh nine oh one R, which approves the capital improvement plan for the upcoming five years, twenty-two sixty-six through twenty-thirty. It does not cover the two-way Main Street, which was brought out to a separate resolution, which we will vote upon directly thereafter. Jordan, would you care to chime in about our capital improvement plan?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. As we've discussed in the past, the C I P creates a plan that enacts the priorities of the council in the form of a document that goes over five years. enacts the priorities of the council in the form of a document that goes over five years. This plan includes many things from streets and bridges to Mox and Creek projects. It's a plan that we're statutorily required to do. This plan does include a provision for Main Street, so that was separated into a resolution, which will be considered later. But we held a hearing on this CIP at our last meeting and staff recommends approval of the CIP as presented. Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Ronane and a second from Councilman Ward. Ron, anything?
No, I just want to clarify it for our, for our viewers there and our people here who are attending. This is the first of two. This is a standalone to deal with the vast majority of the, of the capital improvement projects for the city. And the reason we're doing this is so that we don't hold the rest of the, that entire comprehensive plan hostage by the Main Street issue. And that will be following right after this.
Thank you for that clarification. Anyone else in the council have anything on any remaining capital improvement projects we'll be voting on here? All right. Jordan, would you give us a roll call on the passage of that resolution?
Councilmember Norvstrup.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
E. Conger.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Foberg.
Aye.
Ronane.
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman.
Aye, motion carries. Next, we've got the discussion of options for the Main Street project and a possible first reading passage of a resolution, which would amend the capital improvement plan regarding that single item, the two-way Main Street. Ron?
Thank you, Mayor. So what the council and the people have before them is the council agenda memo that helps us try to navigate through this, this conversation tonight. Initially, 250902R, patterned after the language in the capital improvement plan, which identifies a two-way Main Street on pages 46 and 56, and allocates $500,000 towards that project. What 02, what 250902R does is allows the, the council to kind of approach this in a, in a stepwise fashion. The first motion, as you can see on the council agenda memo, is to have a discussion about whether you in fact want to configure the Main Street for two-way traffic. And depending on how you would vote on that, you may proceed to the next section, the next motion, or you might go simply straight to number three. But number two, then, if, if in fact there is a decision to configure it to two-way traffic, then you could choose of the, of the two options that we've put out there and that were earlier on the, on the screen. And then once the council has resolved that issue, then you can go to the last, the last item to, to actually pass the resolution. And the resolution is what wraps up your constitutional statutory obligation to pass a comprehensive improvement plan. The city manager submitted that to you. And now what you can do is, is move for final passage and, and a probable amendment to it in some fashion, as we, as we can see from these options. But if you have any questions along the way, please ask. But in the meantime, I'm going to ask that the council, just to keep it streamlined and on track, try to follow what we have on the screen here as far as the, as far as the motions. And lastly, I'll just show the, the viewers and the, and the people in the audience, what we're talking about here. We have a resolution that establishes that we have set aside the two-way Main Street. And I've given the council three options. One would be describing, option one is the two-lane project, which is also the same as the layout that you saw earlier. Option two is the three-lane with the left-turning lane project. Again, that was shown on the layout. And then option three is simply rejecting the two-way Main Street and replacing the $500,000 with undesignated amounts for streets and, and bridges. So however the council ultimately acts, which, whichever option it ultimately chooses, you will have met your obligations under the charter.
Thank you for that explanation, Ron. Appreciate that. Looking around, the first proposed order of business would be to, for someone to make a motion to configure the street from Roward Avenue to Sixth Avenue from one way to two-way. If that does not get a motion or does not get passed, we move ahead to yet another option.
Number three, probably.
Number three. So.
Mayor.
Go ahead, David.
I don't know if I'm jumping ahead, but I'll try it and Ron will correct me if I should wait. But I would like to amend motion one. And the motion would be to accept, I moved to amend motion to accept option one to strike 500,000 for, for the two-way Main Street and replace it with 200,000. Add a new line item under that called, under, doesn't, or undesigned and appropriate 300,000. And two would be to strike the regarding in the title and replace with an appropriating 200,004.
So can I weigh in on that?
Please do.
I know a motion has been made, but David, I, I think that would be better suited once you get to which, which option the council actually picks. And then if they pick option one, then you could make your motion to amend that. Okay? Yeah.
David, are you making a motion to convert to a two-way main?
Yeah, I'm move number one.
Second.
Okay. So I've got a motion from Councilman Novstrup and a second from Councilman Ward for proposed action one, which would ultimately configure Main Street. It doesn't set up what that particular reconfiguration will look like, but it does push it to two-way traffic. Now would be the time for the council to have discussions as it relates to the two-way. I know that Councilman Johnson had some, some thoughts to share. Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. And first, can I ask a question of Chief McNeil? What is the statute of limitations for Mr. Cantaloupe, who's openly admitted to passing beer on a two-way Main Street?
The only way we could go with that is if we found a photo with him. So, and I don't think we'll find anything. So I think he's safe.
All righty then.
I thought that he was teasing off that that was legal at some point.
So in recent meetings, we've heard input from several council members about this resolution. And I've listened politely and I would ask for the same courtesy now. We don't often say it publicly, but I will say it now that, how much I appreciate the collegial atmosphere that we enjoy here around the room and the camaraderie where especially we discuss topics that involve opposing views. It's a great thing. Two-way Main Street is a controversial topic. We all have reasons why we support it or don't. Some of you have loyalties to employers, to spouses, to groups that must be considered. And I understand and appreciate that. I get it. I attended meetings in 2023 about converting to a two-way main. And I carefully studied the 32-page HDR traffic study. At the time, it seemed an intriguing idea. And during the run-up to our budget and CIP, I've done a deeper dive and reached a very different conclusion. So tonight, I'm doing something that I've not done before in a council meeting. I'm reading some prepared notes. My intent is to shine a light on talking points that until now I feel are missing from the conversation, just to tap the brakes, present a common sense approach to this resolution and some compelling arguments for consideration. Contrary to statements that were made at our special session, people opposed to restructuring main are not uninformed. They're not misinformed. They're not giving in to pressure groups. I feel like these are off-putting ways to describe many of our friends and neighbors who simply prefer the advantages of a one-way main. We all share a common ground. We love downtown. We want it to thrive. We want it to be an attractive place to live, to shop, to dine, to entertain. I do want to make a few observations. I feel like advocates for the plan have upset many in the community by ignoring input from the citizens and as well, making some statements that might be considered cavalier. The special session two weeks ago, one speaker referring to plan changes in the 500 block stated that if one to two retailers have to suffer so that other businesses can benefit, so be it. I do feel that's a harsh attitude to take towards two legacy businesses who are now caught in the crosshairs of this project. Domino's customers come downtown for nearly 40,000 carryout orders per year. And A1 has been in business for 40 years at that location. So I just wonder openly, what do proponents recommend Darren Brent and their families do if this resolution passes? How would losing those two retailers benefit Maine? At the special session two weeks ago, one speaker offered that downtown businesses should require their vendors to convert to smaller delivery vehicles so they can unload supplies on side avenues as a way to make this plan somehow work. I feel that's presumptuous to think that supply chains can be manipulated in that way. The Aberdeen Downtown Association website describes the history of one-way mains as relics of the Cold War, and stating that traffic in those eras was made to flow in one direction to allow faster evacuations during a nuclear attack. And, you know, I'm actually embarrassed for downtown when I read that. My wife's family moved to Aberdeen in 1971. Atomic bomb evacuations were absolutely not a factor in setting up our six-block main as a one-way in 1978. In fact, I believe that street conditions in place today were implemented in 1978 to specifically avoid some of the hazards and inefficiencies. We'll see with the two-way main. At last week's council meeting, a few members offered that this project should be viewed or could be viewed as an experiment, that we should pass it to see if it works and that we can always revert back if needed. And pardon me, but this sounds way too much like 2010, when Obamacare was being debated and Nancy Pelosi famously stated to an unconvinced Senate, we have to pass this bill so we can find out what's in it. Can you not see the similarities? I have to smile at that. Similar strategy. So here are five key issues that I have with this resolution. And chances are, there may be a few, I hadn't thought of that bullets here for you to digest. Number one is a strong grassroots opposition. Outside this room, almost no one in Aberdeen supports this project. People are upset they aren't being heard when they say it's, when they say that it is not needed or wanted. And so the perceptions and conversations and coffee groups across town is that the council, the ADA, the ADC are in an echo chamber, hearing only their own voices. And I would say that in 13 years on the council, I have not seen the public so united and galvanized against an idea. As leaders, perhaps this should give us pause. We owe it to citizens to look outside our tiny civic bubble and respectfully consider all voices. Number two, poor perception of city priorities. This project is one component in our 178 million budget, which we passed, and a $75 million capital improvement plan. In the big picture, we've seen the water tower project grow in cost from $5 million to 13. Our wastewater treatment upgrade ballooned from 55 million to over 90 million. We've greenlighted several very expensive projects recently. And while these, while this one is a small percentage of the overall budget, it's still no small thing. The public expects government to use fiscal restraint. This project coming forward in a time of heavy spending makes the council appear somewhat tone deaf. Number three, inconvenience, parking hassles, poor traffic flow, inconvenient driving routes, which are all kryptonite for retail activity. I want to focus on a few likely scenarios. Number, number one is fewer parking stalls. We're, we're talking about three parking spaces removed in some blocks, eight stalls or more in the 500 block and no access to stalls now on the left side of the street. So everyone will experience dramatically reduced parking options. In fact, parking stall options will be cut in half for both directions of travel. Have you considered what that will look like? Fewer stalls means more circling the block, hunting for a parking spot. It means more driving onto the next block or both. It will make shopping or driving on main actually frustrating. It's not efficient. It's not going to be pleasant. How many times will someone circle the block or park way down the street, especially in winter, before deciding to do business elsewhere? For some reason, advocates' thinking seems to be, we want more traffic on main. To achieve that, we'll intentionally remove 15 to 20 parking stalls. Yeah, that should do it. What an impractical way, I think, to roll out the downtown welcome mat. Also, train traffic continues to increase and trains are getting longer, aren't they? Up to 150 cars. Stop trains impede the flow of traffic for both directions at the north end of Maine. And BNSF often needs 10 minutes to clear that intersection. The predictable result, even with the two-way main, many people will still use Second Street to go north and south. Also, congestion and messy freight logistics due to vendor unloading UPS and FedEx deliveries and construction projects. Two weeks ago in our meeting, it was reported that an Aberdeen Community Theater light bulb replacement project in the 400 block required three days of diverting traffic to a single northbound lane. How will that work in a two-way scenario? Spoiler alert, it won't. Construction crews cleaning up and building the new Sears lofts needed traffic in the west lane to be blocked for weeks. It will not be possible to block one lane of traffic for construction projects going forward. Delivery trucks will be forced to use side streets and alleys, often some distance from the delivery door. Has anyone considered what congested side street traffic will look like when drop-offs can no longer occur in front of business entrances? The reality, it will be a mess with bottleneck traffic on the avenues and dollys and pallet jacks dodging pedestrian traffic. Additionally, some blocks no longer have alleyways, which will make deliveries on those blocks problematic. Number four, safety issues. We've heard repeatedly that this plan will be safer. How exactly? Please be specific. If this were true, why haven't examples of improved safety metrics been provided to validate this claim? As I see it, this project makes main less safe. So please put on thinking caps for just a second. A, the very nature of head-on traffic means less margin for error and therefore more opportunities for collisions. That's what makes traveling on I-29 so much safer than driving on Highway 281. It creates new hazards for pedestrians who aren't accustomed to looking both ways. It will be harder and more dangerous to back out of parking spaces every time a vehicle backs out. Drivers in that lane will notice brake lights or reverse lights, and all cars in that lane will have to stop to accommodate the vehicle backing out. This creates disruption and delays in traffic flow as strings of cars wait for cars to back out. And ain't nobody got time for that. Reducing to one lane combined with driver blind spot hazards when pulling out will likely result in more rear-end fender benders. Great for Aberdeen's fine body shops, but not so great for everyone else. And then messy stacking of southbound vehicles turning at Sixth Avenue will create greater possibility of collisions at that intersection, both as vehicles turn onto a tighter south entry point on main and as they slow down to turn left from main onto Sixth. Finally, number five, the problematic study assumptions. Advocates have cited frequently the study as if it is empirical. And I say far from it. Assessments and projections made by the HDR study are speculative and do invite criticism. Page six references Louisville, Kentucky as a basis for before and after comparisons. Problem is that Louisville has 650,000 population and it has 11 highways that feed into downtown. This is a templated and bogus comparison, and data in the study cannot reliably forecast any revenue gains from this project. So closing thoughts. This is a critical time, I think, for common sense to prevail. If this were a good idea, if it were a sensible idea, I would jump on the bandwagon and grab the reins. But it's neither. It seems to be making a change simply for the sake of change. Also, basing decisions on keeping up with the Joneses or keeping up with Watertown or Sioux Falls or Millbank or Mowbridge is a poor practice, whether in our personal lives or in government. Our Main Street is not Phillips Avenue. The fact, the fear that we are behind the curve exists only in the minds of anxious advocates. The reality is that decades of established traffic patterns and muscle memory will cause many traveling south through town to continue choosing Second Street as their preferred thoroughfare to avoid stopped trains, to enjoy faster traffic flow of 30-plus miles per hour. Actually, 30, right? Right, chief? Exactly 30. Two lanes flowing swiftly and close proximity to easy blocks from main. Last week, I visited on business two thriving cities that have several one-way streets in their downtown areas. Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, Miami Beach, Florida. And I note that it's not so much the direction of travel that dictates retail success or headcounts, but what attractions are provided, we provide for customers to come downtown and how we market it. Declines in commerce on Main Street have been due to normal and natural societal influences, the rise of online shopping, Lakewood Mall opening in 1990, not because traffic began flowing north after 1978. I believe strongly that valiant downtown efforts are ongoing with good success with the great folks at Aberdeen Downtown Association, the CBB, the Chamber, plus investors working hard to improve the downtown vibe. These individuals should be commended for bringing events downtown, keeping downtown clean, attractive, and inviting. There is great momentum on Main Street. I feel it. And things can continue to improve without radical without radical change. I'm unconvinced that changing main will create any significant bump in business. It may have the opposite effect. It could lead some actually to avoid main street. And finally, as leaders, it's easy to fall into the trap of thinking that we know best. I'm afraid we've done that here and dismissed the opinions of many caring and concerned neighbors. Whatever the outcome of tonight's resolution, voters will likely have the final word, as we've heard. So just a heads-up, the pitchforks, I think, are out. So I invite each of you to consider this input and citizen input as we decide the best way forward. Thanks for your, your time this evening.
Thank you.
Councilman Johnson, that was very, very thorough and well-prepared, and I think brought forward a lot of good points to consider for sure. Anyone else from the council have any thoughts?
Mr. Mayor.
Go. Tell me.
I'd like an opportunity. I have not weighed in thus far, but I think for our vote, it is important that we do. I look at most of the world through a lens of process change and how, how things. It's been a long time writing user interfaces for computer software, and how, how people use things, and how, and how they go about their business, and directing the flow through manufacturing facilities, and how supply chain works. And I've worked in these areas, and it gives me kind of that perspective to lay over the top of, of other things. Usually when I, when I, historically, when we start big projects in the corporate world, there would be not just studies, but multivariate analysis, and lots of looking back to say, "Okay, we're going this way because the experiment says this, and because the experiment says this, we've also traced back to verify that, hey, other things didn't create the, whatever the outcome was that we were trying to see." So that way, you're spending your money in a place, in a place that you've got a known outcome and you've, you've got a known result. And where that wasn't done, I can attest to a number of projects where we spent money claiming we were saving money going in, and undoing things we claimed we saved money at the other side, and it, it wasn't a good result. I appreciate that a lot of work has been done to attempt to justify this. When I look at, when I look at it, I, I really don't know if it's going, if it would be successful or not. My leanings and inclinations are that it would not. I don't understand, I can't draw a line between we're going to increase traffic to get more, by getting more flow, by having two ways, but then we want more flow, but we want to slow traffic down. My lived experience is that when we, when I approach main street, even from the south, I don't travel down main street if I'm trying to get anywhere because it's too slow as it is. And so I, I just don't see how creating a scenario where we have to slow it down further beyond fifteen miles an hour, which is already plenty slow, I, I don't see how that is going to work. We're looking at a project here that, and I, you know, I, pretty recent off my campaign trail, there were only a handful of issues that came up that people talked about to me, and this was one of them. And until I had actually sat at this seat, everybody that had talked to me while I was campaigning was against the project. Everybody said, "You wouldn't let them do that to us, would you? You wouldn't let them change our main street." With one exception, somebody who said it was great fun back, back in the day when he could cruise, cruise main street and hand things off across to the oncoming car. I did hear that story from one other person, but he also agreed that he didn't, didn't want to see main street changed. The, in light of the fact that I, since then, and, and it's just been overwhelmingly, outside of this room, I really have not heard anybody that is in favor of it. I've heard many people that are devoutly against it. I've had a heavy string of emails saying that, that people don't want this. And it's not been from just one group or one place, it's from different vectors and different people in our society that have no reason to interact with each other. It's just been a pretty consistent, "Don't do that." So, in light of that, as a city councilman, I feel first that where I can, it is my place to follow the wishes of my constituents, but beyond that, but to follow the wishes of my constituents, but at the same time, there are things where I would, where I would change. If there was a clear line that, yes, this is going to be best for the community, but I don't see that clear line. I don't see the multivariate analysis that says. I've, I've seen lots of things that say, "Well, in these other towns where they've switched, business has gone up," but I've seen nothing to rule out that the business has improved because of economic, national economic trends, or was it really the two-way main street? I see no distinction that clearly says, "Well, this is, this is what it was." I've heard lots of testimony. I appreciate all the work people have put into it, and I've spent, I've spent much time myself measuring our streets, comparing to the cities that we've been told are similarly situated. I think the large cities are not similarly situated, straight, straight up. I agree, we are not that much different from Watertown or Brookings in size. However, I've noticed that one of the differences in Watertown is on, is that they have no bump outs, so their whole area feels a lot more open. Brookings has some bump outs, I don't know if they're quite as aggressive, but they have much, much bigger sidewalks. The, there's just things that make them different. They've also got a different community, different population. I frankly am not overly swayed either direction on the, on the safety. I personally feel that if I only have to look one way, that, that's probably a better and safer scenario, however, when I'm crossing the street. However, my trust in my fellow man is low enough that I do look both ways at one-way streets. Now, I've, I've heard some testimony about people coming the wrong way down, down main street, and I'm sure that happens, but I don't feel that the appropriate way to make a decision is based on somebody who's clearly not following the law and clearly not doing. I'm not going to cater to, you know, I mean, let's arrest them and maybe send them back to get a new driver's license. Not, I, I'm not swayed by that. I do feel it's very tight. I think all the parking problems in this, in the first block are legitimate concerns. I am very concerned about supply chain because our deliveries currently do come right off of main street. Yes, other places have done it, handled it differently. I think, and we could, but I think when we make a vote for changing, that changes that we are causing an additional cost to either our, our businesses, or to, well, to our businesses indirectly through their service providers. And I, I think, I, I'm just uncomfortable making a cavalier statement, and I don't feel that that's been figured out at, at this point. I just really don't. The, would like to echo also both what we heard last week and, and this week, that I very much appreciate this council and that the, I appreciate the collegial attitude and the fact that although we do, and we are likely to disagree, I think everybody in here is truly understanding that we're all interested in the city's, in the city's best interests. At this time, under the current, under the current situation, I do not feel that we have met the burden of proof required to go against my constituents' wishes as I understand them. And so I will be voting against the two-way main street. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tell me.
Mr. Mayor, could I have just a moment?
Of course. Charlotte, good to hear from you.
The voters in my district have overwhelmingly told me they are against any, any change in the two-way main street, in any way, shape, or form. They're adamant they're against it. And so I have no choice but to follow the wishes of the people who elected me to this position and vote no.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead. Rich?
I just want to say thank you guys for coming, first off, and I appreciate it. I think we do get along on, on everything, and a little bit of disagreement, I think, is okay. If we agree on a hundred percent of things, we're going to have a lot more issues that are, that are unresolved down the road. So, just want to address a couple. I think I, I spoke enough last week on, on my support. I still will support a two-way main street. I think it's a very good change. Just to highlight a few things that were said, you know, Mr. Councilman E. Conger there mentioned, hey, you, you like to start in with system development. I don't believe that if we were to take a look at main street right now, a blank slate, that we would feel that it, it would be the best decision to have two ways, two ways, and then one way. I truly feel that it, it would be best to design it as a two-way, like it was initially designed, and then reverted, like we've talked about. As far as Second Street, I think both you guys alluded to main street is not a thoroughfare. I think Councilman Johnson mentioned the interstate. Main Street, downtown main street here is not interstate. It shouldn't be a thoroughfare. That is why we have five lanes just two blocks over on Second Street that Street Conger alluded to. That's a really good way to get from the north end of town to the south end of town. And like I said last week, it, it may be good for some businesses to have seven-hundred-and-fifty more cars coming by their traffic. I know we may be able to land a few more businesses if we have our traffic counts up. However, I'd agree, I don't necessarily want to have seven-hundred-and-fifty more cars just coming down, driving, because, hey, I can go two-way now. I want the people that are going to come shop downtown to do that. And I've talked to a lot of people, I know I have a lot of constituents as well, that have reached out on both sides of the aisle. And, and like I said last week, I've had some difficult conversations with those that want to keep it the same, but I want to tell you, I've had a lot more conversations, especially recently, on people that are really urging for it to support. I encourage them to come and, and speak their sense, and that's a whole nother issue on maybe, you know, the people that are, you know, forty and under, getting civically engaged and involved, and I appreciate all you guys for doing that. But right before coming in, I was stopping into a store, they had three patrons, they all twisted my arm for a while, saying, "You have to support this, you have to support this," and giving examples of other cities as well. So, I think it is going to have a, I, I really believe it's going to have a great positive impact on the downtown. I've been working downtown main street about five, six years now. I live on North main street. I hear people that are working, shopping, coming down there, that they just, they think it's a really good idea. And I believe, Mr. Johnson, you're completely correct. We need to take a look at some KPIs. Let's do that. I don't know if now is the time. I trust our city engineering department to take a look at that, as well as with traffic flows, to make sure that, I, I think it just makes sense. We're going to need to add a couple always stops if we do move forward with it. And congestion is a good thing. Like Sioux Falls, we're not Sioux Falls, no, we're not going to be, just because we changed to a two-way, if we go that way, it isn't going to change the dynamics of our city. We're still going to be Aberdeen, South Dakota, we're still a hub for our smaller rural communities to come here and shop, and overall, it's, it's going to be a very good change. And bottom line, like we discussed, we do have a main street downtown project eventually. And we know how, how much it affected South Maine last year when we did that. I know that adversely affected some businesses as well. And anytime there is change, anytime you're investing in infrastructure and looking at improving the city around you, there might be some growing pains, and I would anticipate there may be some of those, and there's probably future discussions that we should look at on deliveries on main street. Should there be a drop zone? Should there be delivery zones on side streets like a lot of communities do have? I'm not sure, but I'm going to support this, encourage you guys to, and either way, however it goes, yes or no, guys? I, I'm not going to lose sleep on it. I, I just want to say thank you guys for, for reaching out. I have listened, I've reached out to every single one of you guys that have, have, you know, reached out to me, and I appreciate that. I, I really do. But I'm going to support it, encourage you guys to do the same.
Chad?
And again, I'm going to repeat a lot of what Rich just said, so I'll save all that. Again, this was not a easy decision to come to, I've heard from both sides. I've heard a lot of a third side with people that just don't care either way. If it's one-way, we'll go, if it's two-way, we'll still go. There's been a lot of those as well. But there has been a lot of support for this, there's been a lot of other business owners on main street. The main street area is, it's changed, it's changing, continues to change, we're adding apartments. I don't think that the two-way is going to be the silver bullet, but I think it's going to be a piece with the apartments and the residential movement, and really kind of give us a chance to springboard. So, I will be supporting it, and I thank everyone's input and involvement with this.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman.
I just wanted to say that I was talking to somebody who's involved in national politics earlier today, and they said, "Well, thanks for your service on city council." And I said, "It's just, it's a healthy place to be." Like, when I was a kid growing up, I thought I wanted to be a US senator until I entered on Capitol Hill, and I realized that was the last thing in life I wanted to do. Because when I think about government, I think about the kinds of conversations that people on this council have had about this issue. The time that each one of us has spent sitting down with owners of businesses, sitting down with people that have invested in, in buildings downtown, sitting down with people that oppose, people that are in favor, and we've spent a lot of hours. And I think that what's happening at our council level is the way that government should happen. And I want everybody to know that we have spent a lot of time, even if I'm voting in favor of it, I spent a lot of time with the owner of Domino's, I spent time talking to people who are opposed to it, and we heard you. And that's what I really want everybody to understand, most of all, is we listened. And so the proposal A in front of you, or one in front of you, preserves as much parking as we humanly can. It preserves trees. It's a compromise to say, "Let's go back to the way this street was designed to be, to flow, to connect the south and the north of our town through the central spine." It was designed to be a T-town, like I said, where the main street intersects the main railroad at a perpendicular angle. That's how it's designed, and that's how it's supposed to flow. And if we increase the traffic on main, it's a healthy thing for businesses. I talked last week, for those of you that weren't here, about growing up on main street. I started working retail in my parents' shoe store at age twelve. There are businesses that have closed downtown. There are families that have lost thousands and thousands of dollars downtown because there wasn't enough traffic coming by their business. We need to respect Domino's, we need to respect the Lock &amp; Key Store, we need to respect those stores that have been there a long time. We also need to respect the owners that are putting their livelihood out there, or putting their life savings out there to, to give it a go, to create a business downtown. And I think we can do both. That's the way government's supposed to work. We're supposed to listen to each other and find a solution that makes sense for as many people as possible, and that's what the council is doing, and I'm proud of the council for listening to each other and for coming to conclusions that we think make sense. The last two things I want to leave you with is, the population that Mr. Cantaloupe cited is exactly right, and that should give us pause. We should want our population to grow. And when I talked to two young people right before I came here, I said, "Oh, I got to go vote on two-way main street," and they said, "Why are people opposed to it?" And I said, "Well, there's lots of reasons, da-da-da." And then they said, "Well, but it's so confusing." And these are students at, at the university. And if they're not from here and they avoid main street, which is what one of them said, that's not good. So for those of us that have lived here a long time and we like the one-way, we're used to the one-way, it's actually the opposite for some people that are newer to town, and they might just avoid main street. We don't want that happening. And when we look at the numbers that are out there, the number from the study with actual twenty-twenty-two traffic counts, it was fifty-one thousand cars north of the flame and twenty-two thousand south of the flame on main street, if I'm looking at it correctly. If we can get a fraction of those cars to be coming south, those businesses are going to see a lot more traffic every day, and that's a healthy thing for those families that are hanging up a shingle, opening a business, giving it a go, so that they can be in business for fifty years, and we can all be proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob, have you got anything?
I think everybody is, is discussing a little bit how they're going to vote and why they're going to vote, and I guess I will do the same thing. I was a teenager in the late nineteen seventies, and I remember the debate that was being had throughout the community at that time. about changing it from a two-way Main Street to a one-way Main Street. And the configuration at that time, of course, it was a four-lane road, as I recall, with parking on each, with parallel parking on each side of the street. Uh, learning to parallel park, uh, Bill Cantaloupe, uh, on Main Street was, uh, was not a treat. But I think the real, I, I remember, again, as a, as a teenager during the nineteen seventies, uh, I remember, at least my perception was that the reason that we were converting from two-way Main Street to a one-way Main Street was people like Bill Cantaloupe and maybe me, taking mains on Friday and Saturday night. You'd start at Scotty's, you'd drive all the way down to, to, to Terry's Drive-In. You'd come around and you'd go back and, and it was, uh, I, my perception is that that was the reason, uh, that was the real motivation for the change. And I thought it was, I thought the change was, uh, was not an appropriate change, uh, in nineteen seventy-eight. Um, and I, and I thought it was really just picking on us kids. Um, I do, I could probably, uh, chief, testify to Bill Cantaloupe having been in possession of alcohol underage. Yeah, he gave it to my brother. But after they made the change, remember, they, they, they really, uh, re-poured, uh, curbs and re-poured, um, sidewalks, and really tried to make it conducive to a one-way Main Street, to allow head-in parking, and, uh, and that's really the way it is still configured today. I've been counting noses on this council for about a dozen years, and, uh, it appears that there are five votes to pass this. And so I think it is gonna pass tonight. But through this discussion, uh, I've, I've, um, made some conclusions. Uh, many of, uh, these are the same conclusions that my, uh, colleagues have mentioned. Um, I am persuaded that a two-way Main Street is probably better, uh, for Aberdeen. Maybe it was better in the eighties and nineties and so forth. But I'm convinced that it is, uh, is probably better today. I think, uh, um, Councilwoman Foeburg, uh, is, is right, that, uh, that having more traffic for people on Main Street is better than having less traffic. Uh, your best advertising, I've always thought, is your building site, and people who, who don't drive past your building site don't know about your business. And more people that know about your business are more people who are going to, uh, be willing to stop and do business with you. So I think that is better. Uh, I think we are gonna have more traffic flow. We, we've had, uh, a lot of work on this. Uh, we've talked about the, about the surveys that were done, about the studies that were done. Uh, but, you know, Spencer Summers here is, who's here today, Kelly Seanman, who's here today, Olaf Hansen, who isn't here anymore, is now in Brookings. They worked on this tirelessly, and I think they're right. Um, at the end of the day, the community would benefit from this. But I don't know that we would benefit it, from it, just turning the traffic from two-way, I'm sorry, from one-way to two-way. I think we would expect to have modifications, uh, in the infrastructure, and maybe we wouldn't do them immediately. I think Mr. Fisher is right. I think at some point in time, uh, we are going to, if we don't start with it, we are going to need a turn lane onto Sixth Avenue. I think, uh, the, um, CD engineer, uh, convinced me of that a couple of weeks ago. In the military, they have a term called, uh, mission creep. And you start off with this being your mission, and you're gonna get it done for two-hundred thousand dollars. Then to get it done and make it work just a little better, we also need to do this, and we need to do that. And I really think at the end of the day, we, as a, as a council, are going to see the need, uh, to modify a lot of the infrastructure on Main Street. Um, I think the, I heard the reference to bumpouts, which I think is, is a phrase, at least I can understand. A lot of those bumpouts have been configured for, um, uh, traffic only going one direction. And we would need to change those bumpouts to accommodate, uh, more parking, uh, to accommodate our, our community. I'm convinced also through this conversation that parking is important. Uh, somebody earlier today said, if you go to, I guess that was, uh, Bill, that when you go to Sioux Falls, you park a few blocks away and you expect to. Nobody in Aberdeen thinks that, uh, that it is convenient if you can't park in front of a business. And I don't think there's anything we are going to do as a city council to change it. I think that's a reality, that people expect to be able to park uh, very close to, to wherever they are, are going. So I don't wanna see any loss of parking, and, and I do think that's one of the reasons that ultimately we're going to wanna change some of the infrastructure. The CD manager mentioned, I think last week, maybe it was the week before, uh, that, uh, we do intend, uh, like it or not, to have a major, uh, um, infrastructure project on Main Street. We've got aging water lines, aging sewer lines, the street itself is aging. And so at some point in time, that's going to happen. It seems to me that that is the time that a lot of this infrastructure, uh, could be, uh, could be replaced. So my conclusion, uh, is that, uh, a two-way Main Street probably is the right approach for Aberdeen. Uh, I just don't think today is the right time for it. I, I would, uh, I would prefer to see all of this to occur at the same time that we undergo all of these other infrastructure changes. At that point, we can change the bumpouts. At that point, we can configure, uh, Main Street to better accommodate, uh, two-way traffic. But I think today what we are trying to do is do it fast, do it on the cheap, not do it right. Um, I would prefer to see us, uh, do it, uh, do it all at once, uh, make it a, a project that is truly successful and is really better for Aberdeen. So with that, I will be, uh, joining, uh, my colleagues who vote against this motion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rob. Appreciate that input, since I maybe, oh, David, go ahead.
Last week, I, I went through a lot of the reasons why I, I supported it, and, um, and a lot of them have already been said, so I'm not gonna say that. But, um, last week, when I saw the, the plan that was in our agenda packet, and I saw how many parking spots were gone in that five-hundred block, I, I emailed or reached out to Stu, and, and it's like, there's, it's, is this for real? Like, there's gotta be a, a way to save parking spots. And then we saw the plan that was up, um, earlier, um, in this meeting, um, when the public was speaking, and if I was counting right, in that five-hundred block, we only lost one spot on the east side and one on the west side. Um, and I could be wrong, but I, I think I did it right, um, by looking at Google Earth and the street view, um, and then counting the spots on the plan. But like, so I have, I have listened to the people that have been opposed to this, and, and, um, the cost has been a concern, and we've gotten a new estimate. The study was not helpful to the conversation at all. Even the people that are for it would say it's not helpful because they had a four-hundred thousand dollar contingency. And like, it got the conversation started, but it also got it started going in the wrong direction because there were so many things that were inaccurate about it. And, um, and I, I've, uh, looked at parking, like I just talked about, and that, that I immediately, or as soon as I saw it, I reached out and saying, we gotta try to do better. Um, and I, I, it, I take this job seriously, and, and like I said last week, I've, I've been really thoughtful on it. And there's been, there's a lot of people for it. There's a lot of people against it, and there's a lot of people that don't care. Like, I agree with my southeast colleague, um, which, um, it's better if people are involved in, say, one way or another, but, uh, some people, depending on what the issue is, they're just on the sideline. And then that's not necessarily helpful, but that's a choice that people make. Um, so in like, as a council, we, we, we've heard the yes and the no side. We've tried to come up with a plan that addresses those concerns. And I know some of you very well, and, and, um, I, I hope, uh, this one vote doesn't say, like, I'm, um, just gonna be pushed off the side or whatever. Like, I, I, I think, uh, we can still have a conversation. We probably still agree on ninety percent of the things, um, or maybe even ninety-five percent of things. Um, and, and, um, hopefully we can continue to have this conversation, or not just about this issue, but other things, because conversation is important, and having that dialogue is important. And, and I just, I, I, I respect the people that say no to this. Like, I, I don't respect you any less, and, um, and I, I value your input. And I've tried to move this project as a, as person sitting on the city council in addressing those concerns. Did I get it to a hundred percent? No, I, I, I didn't, but I think we're a lot closer to addressing those concerns than when we started. And I guess one thought is, what if we don't do this and a business fails? Like, if we keep it the, the one-way, or our population stays stagnant, or we don't grow, what about that? Um, and there's a million factors, so if anybody, if we don't do this change, and people say, that business failed because Main Street was a one-way, they're not being honest. If people say it failed because we switched it to two-way, they're not being honest. There's a million factors that impact why a business succeeds and fails, and I've lived it. My family's lived it for thirty-one years. Actually, I've lived it longer than that. My dad's owned a business on Main Street since nineteen eighty-two, which is a year before I was born. Um, so like, I, I care about small businesses, and, and I hope nobody says that, that we don't care about small businesses on this council. Like, every single person sitting up here cares about Aberdeen and cares about business in Aberdeen, and, and we can agree and do it, agree a bit, uh, be, we can disagree and do it, agree a bit. Oh, I can't talk, sorry. But you get what I'm saying. But like, we're not, we're, the people that disagree with my point of view, you're not the enemy, and, and hopefully I'm not the enemy of you, and that's probably a extreme word. But I, I just hope we, we continue to, can move Aberdeen forward, and whatever the issue is. Like, we're trying to get web water, or Missouri River water, to Aberdeen. Like, that's a big deal. That's how we grow Aberdeen. So, um, and I'm sidetracking, but like, we're, we, we can disagree and still move Aberdeen forward, so, um. And I think one of my, sorry, just one more thought. I think no matter what happens tonight, and if it gets referred, whatever happens then, um, and especially if it becomes a two-way, uh, project after that, I think perspective really matters. Like, I was sitting at the Northern game on Saturday, and I was looking across the street, cause I was on the west side of the field, and I'm like, I wonder if the people that live on the west side of State Street still are opposed to that project? Like, if those, if the people that live there still wish that we didn't build Dakota Bank Stadium, or the, when the city council, which this is before my day, when I was on the city council, it, would, would the people still agree that Fifteenth shouldn't be closed? I don't think anybody in this room, or the vast majority of people in Aberdeen, would say that Dakota Bank Stadium was a mistake for Aberdeen. Like, it, it's, it's made Aberdeen better. It's made Northern better. It's made our whole region better and more competitive. And, uh, two-way Main Street is definitely not a, a stadium, um, and I would argue not against Northern, but a two-way Main Street has a lot more value than a stadium. Um, and, and it, it really matters to have a vibrant downtown, and, and I jumped, I guess, a little bit, but I think a two-way Main Street makes downtown more vibrant, more successful. And, and I think if we move forward, I don't think we will regret the decision, um, moving forward. And especially if we can preserve as many parking spots as we've talked about. Um, but I guess those are my thoughts. And like I said last week, I definitely will talk to anybody after this. I, I appreciate input. And, um, I mean, it, this, this might be, oh, this is the first reading, but, uh, so there is a second vote, right? Oh, there isn't. Okay, sorry. I misread that. Um, but, so it is a final decision, but like, we can still have dialogue because there's still design work that has to be done. So I've talked too long, sorry.
Thank you, David. Good to get it out. Um, since everyone else has kind of chimed in.
Ms. Ray, can I just say something really quickly?
Please.
Wait, back in the seventies, I think it was decided that we need to have our own water source and not go to web water, right? That was in the seventies? When was that decided?
I was gonna make that point. Geez, Louise. Thanks a lot, Councilwoman Foeburg.
I'm just teeing that up for the mayor. Over to you, mayor.
Well, since I'm the only one that hasn't spoken at this meeting yet, I just wanna say this has been an incredibly difficult meeting, um, or topic. I've got really good friends on both sides. Looking through this entire room, I hardly see anybody I don't like, so. Good people.
Can you be more specific, mayor?
On both sides afterwards, we'll talk about that. But I have had the chance to sit down with a lot of individuals. And I haven't chimed in up until this point very much because I didn't want people to feel like I was pushing this issue or I was influencing anybody's decision, so I've been very careful about that. But I did sit down with quite a lot of individuals, and the three resounding issues that had come to my attention over time had been the cost, the fact that we'd be sacrificing the beautification of the downtown as it exists, and also the loss of parking, which would potentially negatively impact businesses. So we've taken those things very seriously. We've adjusted the costs down by doing the work ourselves and, and doing, um, only the necessary things. You know, I think Rob's comment about waiting until the timing is perfect is a good idea on paper. But I also think that the most challenging things that we've had to do as a council here, and that I've had to do in this position, are undoing the bad things that had just never been fixed before, time and time again. Like, everyone brings it to our attention. The web water, we should've been in web water in the beginning, but they said no. So here we are, desperately trying to claw on the end of that system for a hundred million dollars that we haven't got, but we're doing everything we possibly can. It would've been a heck of a lot easier and cheaper had we just done it when it was easy. Same way with the water tower that we're building, thirteen million dollars. It would've been built in the nineties when we were first told we needed it. It'd been a million or a couple million dollars. Same way with annexing the fairgrounds that we're going through the motions on doing right now. If those guys would've had that source of income for years and years, they would have all-new facilities. They wouldn't have projects that are falling in on themselves that they can't afford to fund. Water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, that's another one, ninety-two million dollars. Just a few years before, it would've been thirty. So constantly putting these projects off is, is just making them more expensive. It makes them more difficult, and it has made this town worse by and large. And so our city, it's, for whatever reason, has seemed to have turned a bit of a blind eye to the downtown for many, many years. We didn't allow them to increase the bid tax. We didn't directly fund any investment. Ever since the street project had been done in the first place, more than twenty years ago, buildings had been torn down to be replaced with ugly parking lots. And it's no wonder that the downtown has had such a difficult time. We've had two businesses fail just this year. We've had two others move out that I'm aware of. How many more is it gonna take before we have to make the determination that the downtown is worth an investment? We have to do something, or it's only gonna continue to get worse. Private investors in this town have been putting tens of millions of dollars into this. There's a lot of good momentum. There's a lot of activity. There's a lot of energy in our downtown, so we can support that and help propel it forward, take the trust of our community partners that have been begging us to turn this into a two-way. It's not gonna be the right time next year. It's not gonna be the perfect time the year after, the year after. It's always gonna be that web water should've been done forty years ago, or else, but it just never gets done. So, you know, this isn't the perfect time to make this type of a thing happen. It's gonna probably have a few snags along the way, but let's just straighten out something when it's in front of us and not let it go until somebody else's problem. That's just not a good way to run a city. So that's my two cents. It was way more than I intended to say, but it's been on my mind a lot, and I appreciate all the input from everybody, and we've taken those things seriously. We've tried to maintain as much parking as humanly possible. We've tried to maintain the beautification of that intersection by preserving those trees and adjusting the sizes of those planters, and we've tried to drive down the costs that everyone was complaining about by doing the work ourselves, which is always the right way to handle city government when you possibly can. So with that, Jordan, would you give us a roll call?
Councilmember Ronine?
No.
Foeburg?
Aye.
Lee Belt?
On behalf of my constituents, no.
Ward?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
E. Conger?
No.
Nilson?
Aye.
Norvstrup?
Aye.
Mayor Seanman?
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got a proposed possible action. It's I-
Next, we've got a proposed possible action as item two. We've got a motion to configure Main Street for two-way by utilizing two lanes, or alternately, uh, configure two-way by utilizing three lanes. Ron is pulling up some, some diagrams.
Mayor.
Dave?
So, I got ahead of myself, so, um, I will make the motion now. I move to amend the motion to, what?
You're getting your head of yourself again. You can get a motion on one of those two options, either option one or option two.
Okay.
And then, once that's resolved, then you can go to the third motion, and that's when you make your.
Okay, sorry. So I move that we do option one with the two lanes.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Norvstrup, second. Councilwoman Foeburg? Any discussion from the council? Chad?
I'll, I'll jump in on this one. I know that there is a concern with, you know, the, the three ways out of one lane, and that that getting congested. I don't think there's a more congested spot in Aberdeen than trying to come out of Mike Carroll's gas station under Roosevelt at five-thirty at night. And people stop, they let you in and out. I, I just, I think it's gonna, I don't think it's gonna be as much of, I, hopefully, it's a hassle, and the traffic is great, and we have to come back and fix it. But I think this saves parking, it's the best option.
Mr. Mayor.
Rich?
I just want to echo what, uh, Mr. Nelson said there, so, I agree with you. I think this is a, a really good option, um, and this is part of that compromise, like, we're talking about there, so, I agree. Thank you.
All right, nothing else? Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote?
Councilmember Norvstrup?
Aye.
Nilson?
Aye.
E Conger?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Ward?
Aye.
Lee Belt?
No.
Foeburg?
Aye.
Ronin?
No.
Mayor Shoneman?
Aye, that motion carries. Now, motion number three would be to approve first reading of the resolution as amended by accepting option two A, or, and rejecting the other two options. Uh, and Jordan, you had some financial finessing to do there. Or, excuse me, uh, David, you intended to.
Yeah, sorry, I just wanted to.
Third time's a charm, David.
Yeah, three tries. And I'll make the motion, then I'll explain why I'm doing this. I move to amend the motion to accept option one to strike five-hundred thousand for Two Way Main Street and replace it with two-hundred thousand, add a new line item under that called Undesignated, and appropriate three-hundred thousand, or, and appropriate three-hundred thousand to that. And to strike regarding to the title and replace with an appropriating two-hundred thousand for.
Second.
Can I, just for first reading purposes, can I share that, what that would look like for the council?
Go ahead, Ron.
Is that correct, David? This is what you would be proposing? And then also a change in the title?
Mayor.
Dave?
So, the reason why I propose this is because we've been telling you that it's not a million-dollar project. It's a two-hundred thousand dollar project, and this ensures that, um, we're not leaving that gap that, um, especially the people opposed to the project, um, to address your concerns and, and to kind of put a cap on this, um, that's based on our city engineer's estimates. So, this is another thing that I was talking about earlier, that I'm, I'm hearing you, and I'm trying to ensure that what we're doing is upfront, and I guess you could even use the word more honest. Um, I think the two-hundred thousand is honest without this, but this puts a little more clarity to it, just to make sure everybody's on the same page with the estimated cost is. So, that's why I'm doing it, so, hopefully, it helps clarify the issue.
Thank you, David, I think that makes sense. You make a motion with that amendment. Someone care to make it?
Second.
I think I did, second.
Sounds good. So we've got a motion, Norvstrup, with those adjusted finances, as you can see in front of you, and we've got a second from Councilman Ward.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Just a point of clarification, either for the, the city manager or the finance officer. I know we did approve last year, I believe, the, the five-hundred thousand for Two Way Main. Believe that's undesignated now. You know, I do want to be respectful, you know, we had a contingency in there, hoping we do stick to it at two-hundred thousand. I think this is a really good idea. But Councilman Norvstrup, just curious, though, um, if we do have to go to two-thousand, uh, one, you know, two, two-hundred thousand, uh, dollars and one, you know, one penny above, is that something we can take the undesignated funds and from last year's, uh, undesignated funds to cover any gap for this project?
I would say that you don't, we, we don't have buckets for each particular year. So, the money that's undesignated would, would be undesignated. The intent of the department would to do the work for what it costs and try to maintain those costs as low as possible. If there were, as Councilman Ronin pointed out, that there, on occasion, is creep in these projects, it would be minimal, and we would have to go through a supplement that Jordan would prepare at the, after we know what that number is.
Thank you.
All right, any further questions?
I, I would just add, each budget year stand, stands on its own, so the expenditure authority wouldn't exist without a supplement, as, as Robin stated.
Thank you.
Jordan?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, go ahead.
I believe, uh, Councilman Ward touched on it. I just wanted to make sure, we've been talking about the, um, talking about this estimate at a two-hundred thousand dollar level. It's been just a, a round number rolling around in my head for a little bit. That two-hundred thousand did include a, um, a little bit of contingency in that, or.
It was supposed to be for the more complex of the two options.
There's a, a ten percent contingency in that estimate. All right, thank you.
Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote then, please?
Councilmember Ronin?
I'm sorry, we are, we are voting on the amendment, or the underlying motion has amended.
I will say that the way the motion was, was formed, that is the main motion. So you're voting on the main motion and the resolution. This is first reading and passage of Resolution twenty-five oh-nine oh-two R.
Thank you. No.
Councilmember Foeburg?
Aye.
Lee Belt?
No.
Ward?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
E Conger?
Aye.
Nilson?
Aye.
Norvstrup?
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman?
Aye. Motion does carry, uh, for all of you that came to talk about that. Two Way Main, appreciate you guys being here, appreciate your input throughout this whole process. We do have another item, new business. It is a first reading of an ordinance twenty-five oh-nine oh-two, which amends the home daycare regulations. Amber, are you here to tell us about that?
Actually, that'll be mine.
Okay, her, says presented by, and then there's two.
So I am going to unshare now, is that okay? Stop share.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you, council. Twenty-five oh-nine oh-two is part of a multi-department initiative by the city to modernize and streamline the home daycare licensing program. It recognizes that childcare is a vital component of an economically healthy community. The proposed reforms should better support in-home childcare providers, strengthen families, and grow the local workforce and economy. The reforms, and we're looking at a, a whole wholesale reform of the program, includes a simplified license application and renewal process, faster administrative approvals, and the creation of a new small provider family daycare option. Providers will have access to improved resources, such as CPR, first aid training through Aberdeen Fire Rescue, a dedicated city webpage, direct administrative support for frequently asked questions and community early, early learner events. Licensed helpers will be promoted as a resource to expand reliable childcare coverage for pride, providers while on vacations, during emergencies and appointments, and to pursue off-site enrichment opportunities for their children and the provider. Updated insurance requirements will make participation more flexible. The goal of the proposed changes is to remove barriers, reduce delays, and invest in childcare as essential community infrastructure for a family-first Aberdeen. And if you'll notice, I stole most of that from Amber's worksheet that she had. Ordinance number twenty-five oh-nine oh-two does the heavy lifting for these daycare reforms. In brief, it provides the following. It allows home daycare licenses to be issued by the finance officer as soon as the applicant meets all requirements, with the right to appeal any denial to the council. Currently, those are held up until this council has an opportunity to approve the license. So again, there would be an opportunity, if, if there's a denial, to come to the council. It allows the applicant to temporarily operate, operate a home daycare for up to sixty days while they obtain their license. Right now, when we learn that, that a daycare is light, is operating without a license, we have no choice but to tell them they have to stop. Sometimes it's because they didn't know that they had to be licensed. In the meantime, that puts, uh, families, parents, and children, um, in a, in suspension as to what they're supposed to do. So, uh, there was a new provision added to the, to the daycare to allow for temporary operation, operation for up to sixty days. Instead of the twelve children allowed in a home daycare, it allows licensing for smaller daycare, called a, called a family daycare, and this is limited usually to five or less, but it is dependent upon the homeowner insurance policy, which for most providers is a, is a cheaper form of coverage, and can, and some homeowner insurance will allow for in-home childcare as a business operation. And there was quite a bit of work on that revamping of the insurance requirement because of how, how vital that is to the approval or non-approval of the license. It allows the finance office staff to complete license renewals in blocks instead of dealing with them all year long, which is frankly difficult for both administration and for the providers. We can, we can sync them in blocks, uh, use them, uh, notify them in mass mailings, and handle things much more efficiently. It defines persons throughout the daycare ordinances as a, who are, who are assisting the providers as helpers. Now, there is a licensed helper program, but anybody who's working at a daycare, volunteering at a daycare, providing childcare, is a helper and falls under the requirements of the, of the, of the, uh, program. And then lastly, it makes the master list of children attending the daycare confidential record. That had been a little blip that we had overlooked, and, uh, while we do want that master list, if we have an emergency situation, uh, we don't need that something, to be something that's available as a public record. Our economic development manager, Amber Schwab, had been working with licensed home daycare providers for their input and has gotten nothing but, uh, positive responses to that. She has worked very hard, along with, uh, our, our, particularly our, our finance officer and Stephen Tidavong, our licensed specialists, to, uh, work up, uh, a packet, basically. And she's got that in front of her in partial form. It's not, it's not yet completed, but by the time the ordinance hopefully is, is approved and becomes effective, we'll be ready to roll out that program and provide all kinds of services to childcare providers. So with that, and the council has the daycare ordinance before it, um, staff recommends its adoption.
Move to approve.
Second. Got a motion from Councilwoman Lee Belt, the second. Councilman Johnson, um, Amber, anything to add? I know we had to work, little work stash about this not too terribly long ago. Nice work, appreciate it.
Thank you, and I appreciate everyone, uh, looking at these changes and hopefully moving forward with them. It has been a pleasure to work with all the departments within the city, and I think it really shows our collaboration from department to department, and how we're looking at what we have and making sure we're being as effective as possible. I'd also like to give mention to the Community Development Department. Uh, Emily Ellingson has been helping us a lot as well, and I really look forward to sharing this packet with you, uh, hopefully later in October, when the ordinance, uh, reading goes through. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Rich.
Just want to highlight, great work, uh, job, Amber. I'm not sure if this was part of the, the role within the scope of the early learners group that you're also working with, but incredible job, a lot of good things. It's, uh, very, very important to continue to, to, to push forward with these items. It really, uh, really is a workforce issue as well, when people can't find, uh, affordable daycare for their kids. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Ward. And yes, uh, early learner did have something to do with it. Our sessions, uh, with Aberdeen Development Corporation, and also Workforce and Education Committee, because it is something that we talk about at the chamber meetings, and how we do need more daycare and, uh, just better options for our workforce. Thank you.
All right, we've got our motion, we've got our second. Any, uh, other questions from anyone in the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Specifics, oh, go ahead, Chad.
I did have one question for you, Ron. Section fourteen dash one-three-eight, the building code requirements. Just looking at the last sentence of that, where the use of a portion of the structure of the home daycare is day minimus, the building official or fire, fire marshal may deviate from the code by using alternate methods. Could you expand a bit on what that is intending?
You know, um, Councilman Nelson, this is the only one, I think, that we didn't actually make any amendment to. This is, this is, this is unchanged. And I'm gonna ask, Dan, Ken, if maybe he can answer your questions on that, because I'm not sure what, uh, alternate methods would be used for the building official or the fire marshal in that situation.
Kung fu, probably.
I believe it would be just a situation where alternate means could be accomplished, or could accomplish meeting the requirements of the code.
And I, and I, I'll apologize, I meant to call earlier today and ask that question. I didn't have a chance to, um, I just, I don't know if I'm... I, I don't like leaving an open-ended alternate method statement like that.
Well, because it is part of the ordinance, that, yeah, perhaps maybe we need to have that conversation. But I don't, honestly, I don't know the answer to your question.
Okay.
All right, if there's nothing further, we've got our motion and our second. Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote for the first reading of this ordinance?
Councilmember Norvstrup?
Aye.
Nilson?
Aye.
E Conger?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Lee Belt?
Aye.
Foeburg?
Aye.
Ronin?
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman?
Aye, motion carries. Thanks for joining us, Amber. Next, we've got a possible approval to offset bids for the twenty-twenty-five-twenty-six no-removal service and rent equipment as needed to, in order to, uh, of price and allow the city manager, not finance director, to sign the necessary documents after approval by the city attorney. Stu, how do those bids go?
Thank you, Mayor. I think across the board, in, in a broad, general terms, we had modest increases over last year's prices. Nothing extreme in any, in any event on any of these. We are short a few dump trucks from what we would normally get, so, um, may have to look at adapting or adopting, though, different methods here, we'll, but we'll work through it. And I would recommend approving, um, the, um, the slate as it's presented.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Johnson, and the second was Councilman E Conger?
Nilson.
Councilman Nilson.
I was too slow.
Any further questions from the council? Jordan?
Councilmember Ronin?
Aye.
Foeburg?
Aye.
Lee Belt?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
E Conger?
Aye.
Nilson?
Aye.
Norvstrup?
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman?
Aye, motion carries. Next, we get a possible approval and authorization of the city manager to sign a change order, number one, for the Aberdeen Water Tower and Transmission Line Project in the amount of negative five-hundred twenty thousand, pending concurrence from our S, South Dakota Diner and EDA. Stu, saving a little bit of money, what's being changed? Stu, saving a little bit of money, what's being changed?
So, when we initially discussed this, when we, um, talked about the bid and it came in, you know, roughly three million dollars over, we committed to try to identify through value engineering some, uh, places where we could do some cost savings. And I think we identified four or five, um, things that we could do, um, and, uh, settled on three of them, which is providing us with this savings. And, uh, so we're, we're happy to kick the project off, kinda moving it in the right direction as far as the, the, um, total amount that we have to, uh, pay out.
Move to approve.
Motion, Ronine, second. Norvstrup, uh, any questions?
Mayor, I just wanna thank you guys in Helms for looking at this and finding the savings because that's a significant number, so, thank you.
I agree. Nice work, Stu. We should do that once in a while and push things in the right direction money-wise. Jordan, please give us a roll call vote.
Councilmember Norvstrup?
Aye.
Nielsen?
Aye.
E Conger?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Lee Belt?
Aye.
Foeburg?
Aye.
Ronine?
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman?
Aye, motion carries. Next, possible approval of pay request amount of eighty-two thousand five thirty-one and eighty-seven cents for our street maintenance concrete repair to CWF Masonry of Aberdeen.
So this, uh, project is again, um, improving curb and gutter conditions in the, uh, area that we will be chip sealing next year. Um, the area the contractor was concentrating in this year was, or this, for this project was, uh, west of State Street and kind of north of Twelfth Avenue, between Twelfth and Sixth Avenue. Um, we've got several thousand feet of concrete or curb and gutter put in. Um, you've been down in that area north of, northern, you've seen a lot of work going on out down there and it, it looks really great.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, Councilman Johnson. Second, Councilman Ward. Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Ronine?
Aye.
Foeburg?
Aye.
Lee Belt?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
E Conger?
Aye.
Nielsen?
Aye.
Norvstrup?
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman?
Aye, motion carries. Next, bills and payroll. The payroll period is from September seventh through the twentieth.
Move to pay the bills.
Second.
Motion, Lee Belt, second. Ward, Jordan?
Councilmember Norvstrup?
Aye.
Nielsen?
Aye.
E Conger?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Lee Belt?
Aye.
Foeburg?
Aye, except, well, I'll just abstain. That'll be fun.
Councilmember Ronine?
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman?
Aye, motion carries. And please note the abstention. Next, we've got a city manager's report. Robin?
I mentioned last week that I hadn't done one of these, uh, um, certificates of appreciation for a while, uh, in, in that past week or two. Today, I did two of them. One for Justin Steiger out the water treatment plant, uh, for ten years, and Lance Hamrick in the fire department for twenty years. So congratulations to those two. Uh, there will be a Kramer Center board meeting this week, and then we'll be doing some presentations on things, ideas, uh, one including the Moxon Creek, uh, review that they did. City golf tournament will be this week, and next week, uh, we will have municipal league in Pierre. So a lot of your staff will be representing you in fine form, I'm sure, next week, so, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Can I just?
Yes.
All right, so thank you to Justin and Lance. One last item before we move to adjourn. I'm calling a special meeting for this Friday, which is September twenty-sixth at eight AM. That will consist of an executive session with various groups, including us two, interview finalists for the city manager position and a possible selection of that new city manager. So, you're all well aware of that. That needs to be made public. You will, I, I will, glad to see you all on Friday to, uh, to be part of that interview process. Shouldn't be a lot of, with that, I would take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, Lee Belt, second, Johnson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose name, motion carries. We are adjourned.